All right, we're going to call it a order. Our July 19th, 2022 Board Meeting. Declaration of a quorum, six members present. Welcome to this meeting of the College Station Independent School District Board of Trustees. We were elected at large to represent the interests of our community and our state in educating our students. Our mission for our students in this district is success each life, each day, each hour. We adhere to all pertinent laws, policies, and procedures in posting agendas and conducting our meetings. The detailed agenda information was made available to us at least 72 hours in advance, and we have come, all come to this meeting informed and prepared. This is a meeting of the seven trustees in a public setting rather than a public meeting. As such, public comment is included on the agenda at a specific time and requires us to listen rather than take action so as to abide by the Open Meetings Act. We are pleased that you have taken time this evening to join us. We are very proud of this school district, and we thank you for your interest in and support of our students. That'll bring us to Item C, Recognitions. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, and board member. Jennifer, I think he's ready. Very good. We have Ms. Jennifer Luther with us here today. Jennifer is an instructional coordinator for special services and leads our extended school year program as well, and she has a couple of her young people that are going to help us with our pledge and moment of silence. Jennifer?
Hi, I'm Jennifer Luther. I'm the coordinator for our extended school year, and I'm introducing, this is Lincoln Lauderdale. He's a second grader at Creekview Elementary. What's your name? What's your name?
Jennifer Luther.
No, it's your name. That's my name. What's your name?
Jennifer Luther.
This is Alex Chisholm, and Alex, what school will you be going to next year?
College Station High School.
What school will you be going to next year?
A&amp;M Consolidated High School.
Very good. Thank you. Alex will be a freshman at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Okay, we're going to say the pledge. Let's stand around. Ready?
Oros, ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Texas, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Now for a moment of silence. I say, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Alex and Lincoln, you guys want pictures? Absolutely.
I see my picture.
All ready?
Perfect.
All right, there we go. One, two, three.
Oh, look at that. One more. Picture.
See if I can do it. One, two, three. Awesome. Thank you. All right. All right. We'd like to recognize the artwork provided by our extended school year folks and kiddos there at the back of the room. Even though it's summertime, we've still got great artists working hard through the summer, so make sure you take a look at those before you head out tonight. That'll bring us to Item D1, Board Reports and Superintendent Report. Do we have any reports? No one's meeting? Seriously? We're all working.
I looked at the agenda, and I'm like, yeah, there's probably not a board report, is there?
All right, that'll bring us to the superintendent update. Mr. Martindale.
Very good. We'll start with construction items. I give, I'm pausing to make sure Mr. Hall doesn't run out of the boardroom as I know. We're doing well. Southwood Valley, you know, is the most significant renovation occurring this summer with the second phase of that occurring next summer. That will be a dash to the finish line, so there'll be a number of punch list items that are still occurring once we get school going, but we'll be ready for school with some lingering things to wrap up as we begin the school year. So a mad dash to the finish line. The restroom renovations at Kinsol are tracking well, should be taken care of before school starting, so that one's tracking very well for us. We still continue to have our design meetings for the first phase of the CTE Center. We anticipate putting that out in the fall and hopefully moving ground. I kept saying the end of the fall semester, and John kept saying like December, and so I'm going to say the end of the fall semester or so anyway. December is just when we should start moving ground on that particular facility. Of course, there's a number of other things. Those are the larger ones at this time. If you remember, at the last board meeting, the board approved the funds and to begin work with the two CTE canopies at each of our comprehensive high schools. Also, I wanted to touch on safety. Many may be aware, if not, TEA put out a number of initiatives or really directives the school districts were to perform, actually seven, prior to the beginning of the school year. Things as far as examples, making sure threat assessment teams are trained, doing door lock audits to make sure door locks are working correctly, those types of things. We're in the midst of taking care of those things and planning for that accordingly. All of our principals, our secondary ones are already still back, are back on contract. Our intermediate elementary will return tomorrow, and we have a meeting with that collective group on Thursday, so we'll be reviewing those requirements in detail with them to make sure we are squared away for the beginning of the school year. And Mr. Hall has done an excellent job with leading safety here in CSISD for many years. It's become a much larger job on top of the construction projects that we have going with our most recent bond. So we do have posted currently a coordinator of safety for our school district and safety and security. We do anticipate a recommendation for that person coming to the board at the August meeting so that we have someone that has more time to truly focus on these types of items, so we're doing the best job possible. The other big one is staffing. Currently, as of earlier today, we are, still have eight vacancies as far as special ed and 10 in the general education area. Again, elementary and intermediate principals return tomorrow, so I would look for that number to kind of go down in the next week and a half or so. If we continue to wrestle with that, then we'll, we'll come up with some different strategies to make sure that things are addressed prior to the first of school. That's not, you know, an exciting number, but we are probably tracking well than most, to be quite honest with you. This is not an issue limited to our school district, so we'll stay aggressive with that and make sure that we will be prepared for our kiddos the first day of school regardless. A couple of student celebrations for the group. We did have several or some students from Consolidated High School and College Station High School finish and actually claim a national championship at the Skills USA National Competition, and I believe that was in Atlanta. That's the competitive side of CTE programs. Hayden Clark from College Station High School won a national championship in cabinet making, so he's a national champ, pretty impressive. Might have to hire him to do some stuff in my house. Stephen Fink placed third in the nation in computer programming, and the digital cinema production team, and I hope I say this correctly, consisting of Dat, Ha, and Joseph Bizarro placed third as well. So, and I believe those, those kiddos are at Kinsol. So congratulations to those kids. Just another example of our kids doing an exceptional job. Also, congratulations, and you're aware of this, to our Rock Prairie Councilor, Susan Serovic. She was named the Region Six Elementary Counselor of the Year, so congratulations to Susan. We'll definitely be celebrating her in the future. Some dates of note for our board members. It will get very busy from now till beginning of first of school with different activities, so I just want to make sure we have some things on our radar. These are just FYI, our zero-year teachers, no experience whatsoever, enter the district on Monday, August 1st. New teachers to the district with prior experience begin August the 2nd. We have our new teacher luncheon at noon. We moved that time to noon. We moved back a few minutes on Wednesday, August the 3rd, and if you will check your transmittal or watch your email, I'm sure Mr. Mann, I'm looking for Mr. Mann, I'm sure he's back there somewhere, will continue to send you an invite and pester you until you are SVP accordingly. Now, I'm aware that also the Brazos Valley Food Bank is having their Feast of Carrying that is at same time. I believe it starts at 11:00, so I will let you know. Mr. Mann knows this well. My intent is to be a part of that and then get out to the NTU luncheon as quickly as possible. So that's occurring on Wednesday, August the 3rd. Everyone reports back, all of our campus staff, everybody remaining on Wednesday, August the 10th. We do have our convocation, our district convocation on Friday, August the 12th. It starts at 8:30 at Central Church. And just, just a heads up, I say this every year, you're familiar with this, when you're trying to put 2,000 people in one place at one time, be cognizant of traffic, I would, I would leave earlier than later to get there on time. And of course, first day of school is the next Wednesday, the 17th. Next, more beginning, I believe, is the 16th, so we have lots of things occurring prior to our next board meeting. And with that, Mr. Horak, that concludes superintendent's update.
Thank you very much. That'll take us to Item D2, Consider Approval of an Order of Election Authorizing a General Election to be Held on November 8, 2022 for the Purpose of Electing CSISD Board of Trustees Positions Three, Four, and Five by Qualif, by the Qualified Voters of the College Station ISD, Establishing Early Voting Locations and Vote Centers for This Election, and Making Provisions for Conducting the Election. Mr. Martindale.
No additional comments, Mr. Horak. This is simply the Order of Election for the School Board Election on November 8th.
Perfect. That'll bring us to Item D3, Consider Approval of an-
Need to take action on it.
On that one?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. Oh, yep. Okay, is there any discussion?
I move to approve as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Nolan, a second by Mr. Hall. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That will bring us to D3, Consider Approval of an Interlocal Government Agreement Between College Station Independent School District and Brazos County Related to the November 8, 2022 General Election.
And Mr. Horak, this is interlocal agreement. We enter in with the county. They actually hold the election for us. They govern the election for that date, so it's, it's simply approving them to have the election that we just called.
I move to approve as presented.
I'll second.
We have a reversal on first and second there. We have Mr. Hall for the first, Nolan for the second. Any further discussion?
I actually do want to just make one comment. I was, I had asked to clarify earlier and just maybe just to share, I know, I think more so than usual, there was a little discussion about election sites and locations, at least, and just, and you, somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that the law says that we, as a school board, have to follow either three, go along with three election bodies, either the community college, which ours does not have a local election, so that's kind of out, or either the city or the county. And in our case, you know, we choose, we're choosing to vote, or the vote is for us to follow the county, really, because the city also chooses to follow the counties. Is that all correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so, just so people understand, we are really kind of the, by law, the followers in choosing those locations is my underst, that's my, my understanding of it, correct?
This is my understanding as well. Ms. Horn, correct me if we're mistaken on that assumption, since you are our local election official.
That is correct. We have to follow whatever the county recommends. We can provide input, but it is up to the county to determine where the locations are.
Okay. Appreciate that. I just wanted that, to clarify that, because I had this question. That one's really it, really.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Brings us to Item E, Hearing of Citizens. Do we have anything tonight? Nothing there. It's going to bring us to Item F, the Consent Agenda. Those items are going to be G, H2, I2, J4, J5, J6, J7, and J8.
I move to approve consent agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a first by Ms. McAdam, second by Mr. Ben. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. That will bring us to Item H, H1, Consideration and Discussion Related to Texas Association of School Boards Policy Update 119. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak, and board members. Typically, we have our first reading of policy update and workshop. No workshop this evening with it being in July, so this is our first reading for update 119. Remember, our traditional practice with policy updates is a first reading, and then we look for action at the next month's board meeting. So with an update or an overview of policy update 116, our Chief Administrative Officer and Deputy Superintendent, Dr. Molly Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. Mr. Horak, members of the board, good evening. I am glad to bring to you policy update 119 as proposed by the Texas Association of School Boards or TASP. As you may recall, our last legislative session, the 87th, in 2021 was, was lengthy because we had three special sessions that went all the way to late October, and so we are continuing with update 119 to have some additional recommendations coming out of that session primarily. While there are some legal implications, the local policies included in this update are seven and in number, and so we'll go through those using the packet at your place. So we'll start with policy CPC. Policy CPC is regarding records management, and this is specifically in response to recent updates from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission related to electronic records. And so the recommendations that you see for addition to this policy in blue are really related to those requirements to specify the procedures. This does not adjust anything regarding our practice, but it does codify in policy, if adopted, what we would do in terms of managing those electronic records and identifying who's responsible. The next policy you'll find in the update is DMA Local. This policy is related to the district's professional development plan for all of our district employees. While this is something that we do include in the district improvement plan, historically the board has adopted the district improvement plan goals and not the other aspects of that plan. Senate Bill 1267 does require that the board adopt that and that it be guided based upon the State Board of Education Certification Clearinghouse. That clearinghouse was recently released, and so we are reviewing that, and you can expect to see an agenda item at the August meeting regarding the district's professional development plan. The next item in the update is EHAA Local, and this is an update to the policy as it relates to instruction on the prevention of child abuse, family violence, dating violence, and sex trafficking. These items are directly related to Senate Bill 9 and do add language regarding the board's adoption of a resolution, which we actually did back in spring of '22, and that Shack hold public meetings, which, as you know, they do, and comply with those instructional requirements of the law. So these, again, provide an outline and policy of those actions that we are already taking as related to Shack. The fourth policy on the next page included in update 119 is EHBB. This particular policy is related to gifted and talented students, and the change that is being noted there is actually a deletion in policy on the third of three in EHBB. The reason for that is that House Bill 1525 removed the statutory requirement for districts to annually report to TEA regarding funding of GT. They did adjust GT funding, and so the only recommendation for policy adjustment is that that be stricken from EHBB Local. In EIF, the next policy listed there, we had some revised administrative code regarding the application for financial aid for students prior to graduation, and so you'll see the language in blue is related to the fact that we must confirm that students have completed and submitted a FAFSA or state financial aid, a TAFSA, and that is actually information that will now be printing on students' transcripts, and so we already have that in progress as well. The next policy is FFBA Local regarding trauma-informed care. We had this policy in place because Senate Bill 1267 repealed the requirement of annual report. We have removed that in lieu of including it in that board-approved district professional development plan that you'll see at the regular meeting in August. And the seventh and final policy related to this update from TASB's FFH Local. You'll note this is a lengthy policy in nature. It is related to student welfare, freedom from discrimination, harassment, and retaliation. Specifically, the changes coming here are also related to Senate Bill 9, and on page five of 10, the most substantive to note is that we have a parent notification requirement that is now in place. Again, this does not change our practice. You'll, you'll notice that it states that when the district receives a report of prohibited conduct that includes dating violence, the appropriate district official shall immediately notify the parent or guardian of the student identified in the report as either the victim or perpetrator, and certainly, if we were to receive a report of that nature, we would immediately notify both parents as appropriate. Those are the local changes to, to policy. As noted in transmittal, there are a number of, of legal changes that are not going to, of course, require board action, and so certainly, if you have questions about those, we'd be happy to review them as well. With that, any questions or discussion that we can bring back for you at the August meeting?
So overall, I heard you say several times, like, this is already our policy. It doesn't really change what we're doing. It's just wording?
Correct. Yes, it is just wording, because when, when these changes happen legislatively, we typically are aware with a bit of lead time between the actual change in legislation and what we see coming in terms of the needs, and so we've already been working on, on all of these items that do require any sort of procedural change or already had them in place.
So with the electronic documentations that require extra administrative support, is that already taken care of?
We really were already doing those, those aspects, because so many of our records have become digitized over, over the last decade or so.
And just to be sure, I, I heard you say, but the, on the FFBA Local, the trauma-informed care, so we're still doing the training, we're just not sending a report to the state, so it's relieving an administrative burden on us?
Correct.
Okay, great.
Oh, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That will bring us to Item I. I1, Consider Approval of New Administrative Contracts as Recommended by the Superintendent of Schools. Mr. Martindale.
Thank you, Mr. Horak. We have two administrative contracts for recommendation for the board this evening. We have Mr. Seth Gallion. I know I saw Seth earlier. Seth's, we're recommending him for the position of Assistant Principal at A&amp;M Consolidated High School. Seth would be coming to us with one and a half years of assistant principal experience in Bryan ISD, and he previously taught fifth grade bilingual and was a band director as well. I'm looking to see if Mr. Eeks would sit him next to him, but I guess not, but. And also, we have Ms. Tracy Bryce for the position of Assistant Principal at Greens Prairie Elementary School. Tracy is kind of returning to us, right, Tracy? So she is coming to us having served as assistant principal in Comal ISD for the last two years. Prior to that, she was a special ed teacher, third and fourth grade, and instructional coach at Greens Prairie Elementary School as well. So we have those two contracts before you that we are recommending for approval this evening.
I am honored to move to approve as presented.
I have a second.
We have a first, motion by Ms. Ben. Second by Ms. Nolan. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 6-0. Congratulations and welcome.
Don, and Wendy, y'all speak to see who was going first, Seth or Tracy? Never mind, I'm joking. That's, that's all right. Welcome aboard, we're glad to have you guys. Any additional introductions? Any folks with you?
I'm a girl, correct? Just that if I was a assistant principal last year.
Okay, okay.
So this is my son, Kevin Bryce, who is a College Station High School graduate, and this is Max Verment and his girlfriend, and they are both employees of Kidson, so.
Oh, wonderful.
Excellent. Very good.
College Station ISD.
Very good. Seth, welcome aboard.
That's the same name.
All right, thank you so much.
That'll bring us to Item J, J1, Consideration and Discussion Related to the 2022-23 Budget. Mr. Martindale.
Just an update, because next month, I know that Ms. Dross will be coming forward with a budget and a tax rate for the board to consider at the August meeting. Since we have no workshop, we just wanted to use this time for an update, not necessarily that a lot has changed since last month, but just to make sure everybody's got current information nonetheless. So our CFO, Ms. Amy Dross.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale, and I promise, we're coming to the ends. You don't have to hear budget workshop a whole lot more this year, so just to kind of go over a few things. I'm sorry, the one back there doesn't, that side doesn't seem to be working, but we want to briefly go over the budget adoption requirements tonight, a summary of the administration's recommendations regarding this budget. We'll look at, again, preliminary information on the 22-23 budget, and then give you just a high-level overview of both debt service and food service, so you will not be seeing those for the first time next month when we are asked to approve these. But the, the budget, it's required to be proposed to you, the Board of Trustees, at least by August 20th, and adopted by August 31st. Those are the deadlines. That budget must be proposed at a minimum of the function level and include those three funds that I just had in the agenda, the general fund, debt service fund, and the child nutrition fund. All of the other funds are really for a specific purpose, and so they're not required to be, the budget's not required to be approved by the Board of Trustees. A public hearing on that budget and tax rate must be planned and published. A summary of the budget must be posted on the district's website, and we'll do that about the same time that we post the agendas for August. The budget and tax rate may be adopted at that same meeting, or it could be separate meetings, but the budget must come before the tax rate. I know that seems backwards, because the tax rate is what supports the budget, but budget first, then the tax rate. And if the board adopts a tax rate that exceeds the district's voter-approved tax rate, and we've gone over that term several times over the past, but we must hold an election for the voters to approve that rate, and that order must be called by August 22nd. The final budget will then be posted on the district's website, and we will file it with Texas Education Agency. So now to kind of go over what our recommendations are before we get into the numbers. But the administration will prepare a budget for adoption and propose it to you on August 16th that has those three funds, the general fund, debt service- 16th that has those three funds, the general fund, debt service, and child nutrition fund. It will include what we call Compensation Plan A that you, as a Board of Trustees, approved in June, and we'll go over that briefly in just a little bit. And the revenue that will be included in that will be that voter-approved tax rate, because that's the maximum tax rate we can have without voter approval. So that budget will have that particular tax rate calculated. Then it's going to be administration's recommendation at this time that the tax rate proposed would be three cents higher than whatever that voter-approved tax rate calculation is, which would trigger that election. So an order would also be presented for your approval to hold that election, and if so approved, that election date would be on November 8th. If that election passes, then we would bring an amended budget to you that would increase the revenue and include expenses for Compensation Plan B that was approved. So lots of steps in there, but I think it's important to know the order. So just kind of looking at our budget assumptions, we are still going with a 3.5% growth or of enrollment of just under 14,600. That growth is based on last year's snapshot date, which was the end of October, because that's a published enrollment, so it's easy to kind of calculate and see where you go from there. An attendance rate of 95% across the district, property value growth of 11.75, based on an update I received last week. I think we're still tracking there, if not slightly a little higher. But remember, as property values go up, tax rate goes down, so it doesn't really generate us any additional revenue. So we're going to keep it at that at this point and change it to what it really is when we propose the budget. The estimated voter-approved tax rate, or the compressed rate, this is the total rate for debt service and the general fund, is $1152, which is six cents lower than it is for this current year. And then if we go with the proposed rate that administration will present, which will be that three cent addition, the rate would then be $1182 or a three cent decline from the $1212 that exists right now. So preliminary look at the revenue, this has not changed from last month when I presented it to you, but using all of those parameters, we're looking at estimated total general fund revenue of $130,380,000 plus a few hundred dollars there. No recapture at this point. Remember, that all depends on your property values and your student growth there, so no recapture at that point. So when you compare to what you, as a Board of Trustees, approved in August of 2021, that's about a $5.6 million increase. But you'll remember, last year, we had expenditures exceeding revenue last year in the budget adoption. And then kind of looking at total revenue and total expenses, this has changed just slightly from what you saw last month. I've now incorporated Compensation Plan A that you approved into this model and increased our property and casualty insurance a little bit more from where we had last year and a little bit more inflation. But you can see that with Compensation Plan A, expenditures or appropriations in excess of revenue, just around $1.4 million, so much better position than we were last year at the 2.9. And again, this does reduce our use of ESAR funds and the general fund by about $700,000. So just to remind you about the compensation plans. So Plan A took the beginning teacher pay based on that agreement, then to $47,725, that was incoming teacher with no experience, base pay increase of 2% from the teacher's base pay for 2122. So it's just 2% from their last year pay. For all the other pay groups, it would be a 2% increase based on their pay grade midpoint. So that would be Compensation Plan A that is included in the proposed budget. Then Plan B would be contingent upon the Board of Trustees approving that proposed tax rate of, you know, three cents higher, ordering that election and the election passes, but it would take that beginning teacher pay to $49,600. We would do an additional 4% for teachers, librarians, RNs, anyone on the salary schedule, 4% for the professionals, clerical, and auxiliary pay groups, and 2 for administrators. These would all be retroactive to the beginning of their 2223 contract year. So you do that math, 2% plus 4% would be a total of 6 for everyone except administrators, and then that would be 224. And a reminder, then, we also have the retention stipends that will be paid out. Half of the amount would be paid in August of this year and the other half in January.
Amy, quick question. For example, if a teacher has 28 years' experience, our hiring schedule, we just go through, like, I think, 25.
Yes, sir.
So that individual's raise, of which they would receive a raise just like everyone else, correct, would be calculated off their current salary?
It would be calculated 2% of their current base salary, yes.
So is there a cap on teachers?
There is not. What that salary schedule is, and it's very nor, it's common for school districts to have what they call a higher-end schedule, so they look to that schedule for new people coming into the district, that that would be, that 25 years would be what we would look at if they exceeded that. But for those already in the district, if, of course, it's all on how we propose the compensation plan and the Board of Trustees approves it, but our compensation plan has a 2% increase from everyone that's on that salary.
And the additional 4 would apply if the TRE is approved as well, based on whatever they're making now?
Yes, sir. The only caveat would be if they were not hired by a certain date that gets a year of service.
Right. My point being, though, is there is not a cap on that salary once they've hit a certain number.
No, sir, not with this compensation plan.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so let's talk about that voter-approved tax rate election, if the board goes with our recommendation of the three cents. So you can see that first arrow is based on the 11.75%. Our maintenance and operations rate goes from 95.22 cents to 89.22 cents. That's that six cent decline. Okay? If the order is called and it passes, instead, it would go down from 95.22 cents to 92.22 cents. So just kind of a help graphical look at that concept.
But we get to keep more of our money locally?
Yes, sir. There's no recapture in that, correct?
The slide kind of depicts that.
And the state kicks in some.
Yes, that's right. Absolutely. Y'all are quick. I've probably said it enough times, right? So with that three cents, property taxes are estimated to bring in 3.3 million. That is directly to the district, no recapture, none of that goes back to the state. But because we are still in what they call the enrichment pennies, where if the district taxes at this level, the state also increases their contribution to the district, I'm estimating about $1.7 million in state revenue. So for these three cents, it would bring in over $5 million to College Station ISD, and on a per penny, that's just shy of $1.7 million.
Just to summarize the math, I would argue that the school district is probably why the property rates are going up so much, and we're able to keep more revenue and provide a lower tax rate than they're currently experiencing.
Yes, sir.
But if they want that 115, if the voters want a much lower tax rate, that means more money's going to leave, which means the property values might go down and our enrollment.
It could. Now, based on the model we have right now, we're still not in a recapture, but, you know, they change as the year goes, and they know property values across the state and some other things, just like you're going to see in the amended budget tonight that's on consent agenda that you already voted on. That formula changes slightly. So you're going to see, we have additional state revenue, but our recapture now went into play last year, and there was no recapture, only like $25,000 when we started the year. So it's, but there still isn't, but there's not, we have to wait and see what happens with that if we're on the border, but at this point, there's no recapture. Sorry, that probably doesn't make a whole lot of sense, but they change it. Okay, so just kind of quick summary, if with, at the voter-approved tax rate, we would have about a $1.4 million budget, general fund budget, where appropriations exceed revenue. Then if that three cents is approved and we have the election and it's successful, we would amend the budget, recognizing that additional revenue, the cost for Compensation Plan B, and that $5 million we are estimating would be enough to cover the $1.4 million negative here, plus the Plan B. So hopefully, we'll come out with a balanced at that point. Debt service, haven't talked about this much except for the tax rate. So at the current tax rate of .263 cents, we're looking at what our scheduled debt payments are, and should we have, you know, excellent collection rates, which we have had in the past, feel like we could possibly pay off some higher interest debt as well of 2.4 million. We will have estimated state revenue of about $268,000. Much of that is because of the additional homestead exemption from $25,000 to $40,000 that was approved in May, that the state's holding us harmless, so they're going to provide some revenue for that. So the tax revenue required under this model and supported by that 26.3 cents is $31.8 And then child nutrition. Child nutrition has proposed a balanced budget, so very proud of them. But one thing is, for next year, we will be going back to the National School Lunch and Breakfast Program. That's the traditional program we had pre-COVID, where you had your free, reduced, and your paid students. You know, since March of 2020, we've been under the program that allows all students a breakfast and lunch at no charge. So our participation has been really high. This budget proposal brings it back to normal levels pre-COVID, so a lot less revenue and expenditures than you're going to see when you get our final audit report this past year, but is proposing a balanced budget of about $7.6 million. So just kind of a glimpse, I told you at the beginning that you are required to adopt this budget at the function level, so this is kind of what it would look like with the numbers that we have right now. I say draft because I'm still working it out through, between the different functions, but it will look something like this so that you can see all of the categories and the three funds for a total proposed budget. Timeline, we are now at the July 19th. We are scheduled to get certified property values on time by July 25th, and then we will work toward getting the published maximum compressed tax rate that TEA will provide us, do our advertisements as discussed, and shoot for that August 16th board meeting date to actually have the public hearing, adopt the budget, and adopt the tax rate. That same schedule, should you choose to go with that higher tax rate for the election, same thing, we would have that on the 16th, even though the deadline is the 22nd, we'll try not to call you back in extra time, and then November 8th for the uniform election. So with that, I'll entertain any questions you might have.
You mentioned the balanced budget of the child nutrition, but I would also like to note and applaud y'all bringing down the budget, at least for the past recent years, narrowing that budget deficit at the administrative level. And also to note, I think for a school our size, we are the smallest administration ratio for a school at our size, and that says not only a lot about the people that are working in the headshed, but the teachers not needing that extra supervision and making use of the support, like the, I forget the name, but making use of everything that's provided. And so again, bringing down that deficit, I think that really highlights another reaction to the battery, is not so much for the, as much for the teachers, but also is the voters have a chance to vote for balancing the budget in the first time in a while, giving us that help, because y'all have done a great job controlling what we can. We just need that extra revenue.
I agree with that. Thank you for all, so much work goes into this, I know. Do you mind going way back to one of the slides we've seen a number of times with this, the kind of appropriations versus just expenditures way at the beginning, based on the 3.5% increase? It's that one, I think, right? And, because it's, to me, it's kind of along those lines, you know, the first two rows there. The first one is comparing this year's budget to next year's proposed. That's clearly the 3.5% increase in revenue based on our estimated increase in enrollment, correct?
Right, enrollment and property values, yes.
Okay, so that goes from the 124 to the 130. The line below it, we don't automatically bump that up just because we're going to get more students or more property values.
No, we start with the appropriations. I start with last year as a base, and, you know, we've really scrubbed different things, and our budget is so tight. When we're 80 to 85% of our budget is salaries and benefits, there's just not much there to reduce. So we left that base, and then you can see the additional appropriations of what we're adding to last year's budget.
And I think that's really important to point out. It's not like we, we're going to have 3.5% more students. We don't automatically just get to, just, we're not just automatically adding 3.5% more teachers or anything to support that. It's not just automatically happening. The district administration's very careful about, like I said, keeping that as low, and then the new appropriations are just where we really need them, the special ed teachers, and then the things that are really out of our, some of them are completely out of our control because of the inflation and insurance rates and such, so, I mean, I just think it's important to point that out. We don't just automatically bump it up 3.5% because we're having more students, along the same lines. Thanks. Why y'all smirking?
Oh, I love that you point all that out. That's super helpful for me as well, so just to remember that and point and make it more, make it, and clarify it even more. Yeah, I mean, the fuel increase is beyond our control.
I don't think I have any, I don't think I have any other questions. You've done a great job leading us through it, and I...
All right, thank you so much. I think you're staying there, but J-2, consider approval of an order authorizing redemption of outstanding bonds of the College Station Independent School District. Mr. Martindale?
Thank you, Mr. Horak. With additional details on this agenda item, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you, Mr. Martindale. So with the assistance of our financial advisors, they help us monitor our debt and our bonds and look at when it would be beneficial to the district and our taxpayers to do two things. One would be either refund those bonds, like refinancing your home or anything else to a lower interest rate, or reschedule them, but you also have the option to redeem early, and those are usually bonds that are at least 10 years old or older. So based on the 26.3 cents, this particular resolution would authorize, Mr. Martindale as superintendent or myself, once we get tax collections and we determine that there's excess, we can pay some bonds off early, some of those higher-interest-rate bonds, and produce some long-term interest savings to the district and our taxpayers. So this resolution authorizes us to monitor that and within the tax rate that you've approved or will approve in August, to redeem early. If we choose to refund, we would bring that back to you. This is only to pay some things off early, should we decide that that is beneficial and we have the capacity to do it.
I'd move to approve the order authorizing redemption of outstanding bonds of the College Station Independent School District as presented. Second.
We have a first by Mr. Ben, second by Mr. Hall. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero. That'll bring us to item J-3, consider approval of the renewal of property casualty, general liability, and auto insurance for 2022-23 fiscal year. Mr. Martindale?
This is one of those items on that slide. This is one of those items on that slide, Ms. McAdams, that you were just speaking to and subject to inflation and a number of other variables. So with additional information on the renewal of our property casualty and general liability and auto insurance, Ms. Strauss.
Thank you. The insurance market is much more complicated, so we have ANCO fortunately to assist us and make some recommendations. They receive bids and proposals on our behalf and work with us on recommendations. But they reached out to a total of 59 various carriers this year under their renewals. And for large commercial districts, our commercial clients and districts like us, it's very common to have what they call a layered program. So when they got finished and with their recommendation, there is 17 different companies in our property and casualty plan that will ensure at various levels. That would be the most efficient, cost-effective for the district. But unfortunately, just like everywhere, nation, state, are experiencing increases in our premiums. Couple with that, you know, we've been here on our roof and hail, the hail and the winter storm issues. So we've had some pretty substantial claims this past year. So combination of just market as well as our claims, we do have some increases in our rate. So looking at the largest area would be our property and casualty. The rate is point, goes from 24.5 cents to 30.4 cents. So that is equivalent to 24%. Actually, that is less than they were seeing across many of the markets. But that combined, we also had some increase in value on our properties that are trying to just get them to a better market value for the insured. So that was property and casualty, total of 17 different companies in a layered program. They looked at our auto and school leaders and arrows and omissions. Fortunately, those did not go up that much. So we were not, had some increases, but we're able to hold them. The planned deductibles in this renewal are the same that we had last year for wind and hail. So looking at that, the recommendation from ANCO is to renew coverage with, in the layered program, Access Lexington and Berkshire for property and casualty, Travelers for general liability and auto, and AIG for school leaders and omissions. So when you look at the total for those particular programs, 2,073,063 for those policies. I will say there's still a few more that we need to look at, but they're very small, not expected to be more than about 16,000, 18,000 in that range. But that would be network security, underground storage tank, and crime fidelity. So we're still closing in on those, and they will make a final recommendation, but very small. So it's administration's recommendation that you, as a Board of Trustees, authorize the superintendent to renew the referenced policies for the 22-23 school year.
I motion to renew the insurance as presented.
A second.
Motion by Mr. Decker, second by Ms. Nolan. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. That will bring us all the way to item L, executive session, L1. The board will meet in executive session to deliberate the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, including superintendent of schools. Executive session deliberations will be held pursuant to the personnel matters closed meeting. Attention to the Texas Open Meetings Act is set forth in section 551.074, Texas Government Code. Appreciate y'all being here, and we'll see you when we get back. All right, we are back in open session at 7:17 PM, and we are adjourned.